Want to reconvene the February 11th, 2020 regularly scheduled board meeting for the Richland II Board of Trustees where we just returned from executive session to discuss all of the items that were made in the motion to go into executive session. At this moment, we will now have the inspirational moment and pledge of allegiance. And I have asked Representative Ivory Thigpen if you'll come to the mic to do our inspirational moment as one of our leaders in the state, particularly during African-American History Month and the great representation that you bring, Representative Thigpen, who is a friend to the district, and appreciate you being here with us today.
Thank you for the opportunity. I'll be as brief as possible. Pray for me. I wanted to talk to you all today and hopefully bring inspiration around the subject of courage. It is a subject matter that regardless of age, it is something that all persons can make great use of. It was what the lion axed of the wizard. It is the subject matter of the poem Invictus. It is something that often eludes even the most intelligent and even confident of persons. In the Hebrew scriptures, there's a story of a dreamer, a boy who believed in his own ability and dared declare to his siblings and brothers that he was special and that he had a bright future. His brothers did not appreciate his perspective on life. We give no description of his personality, but I can imagine this young man by the name of Joseph was eclectic, maybe had his own flair, his own swag, as students would say today. But it was this brother who was sent by his father to check on his brothers, as a brother should do. And the story reads that from a distance, they saw him coming. And in a term that we're all familiar with now, they started hating on him. The Bible does not say who the particular instigator was, but in peer pressure, oftentimes we're guilty by association. They said that here comes that dreamer. If I would add my own verbiage, that one that thinks he's so special. And they began to plot and even imagine the thought of brothers seeking to kill another brother. We are reminded of our responsibility one to another, that even though we may not be kindred in blood, that indeed we each are our brothers and our sisters' keepers. But here, failing to live up to that responsibility, falling to peer pressure, they plotted to kill their own. Until one, Reuben, the oldest, as an oldest brother should, he decided to speak up. The story says that he intended to save him. You know, confidence can get you to a position, but it's courage that must cause you to act. And too often, if we do not have the courage to act, to do what is right, we might as well not have the confidence to gain the position. Reuben knew what was right, intended to do what was right. He said, "Don't, don't kill him. Let's throw him in this pit." And it said that he intended to come back and save him. But peer pressure got the better of him. The crowd, you see, it's easy to have courage when no one's looking. But can we have each of us as adults, as administrators, as teachers, as board members, as superintendents, as all those who affect life and community, can we have courage when the crowd is there? It's easy to be a bystander and look and think that somebody else is going to act. But can I tell you that the road to hell is paved with good intentions? Judah said, "Well, what will it profit us if he dies? It'll cost us too much to kill him. The blood will be on our hands, and even still, we make no money from it." He said, "Don't kill him. Let's sell him." Coming under the banner of fiscal concern, we learn a lesson that money isn't everything, and some things are more valuable than money. For it was Judah's words that ultimately sold him into slavery. But the story ends that after being sold to slavery, he became second in charge after long trials in Egypt. And each, both Reuben and Judah and his brothers, had a second opportunity to act. The reality is that most of us may not get a second opportunity to act, and that we must have courage even in the face of the crowd. As a representative, as a pastor, as a board member, each of us, as persons who in our own respective rights, have opportunities day after day. I wanted to make sure I stopped on time. We have an opportunity to have courage in the face of difficulty. Let us not be as Reuben and have good intentions, but don't act. And let us not be like Judah and value money over our opportunity to do what is right. But instead, let us all have courage, as so many before us have, in the face of adversity. Thank you so much.
Representative Thigpen, thank you so much for your, for your amazing words. I'm going to take the fact you're wearing that tie and honor the women's basketball team for USC for beating UConn. So, you go USC. Thank you very much. Thank you. Representative Thigpen has been a big friend of the district. We can certainly appreciate the work he's done in education and in the many spaces in our community. So, thank you so much for being with us on your busy schedule tonight to be part of this program. And with that, we're going to bring up our Westwood Army JROTC program for the flag and the pledge of allegiance.
Color, left, see, getting color. Forward, mark, left, 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 right, 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 left, 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 right, 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 left. Mark time. Mark. Color, both, freezing, armed.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mark time. Mark. Forward, mark, left, 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 right, 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 left, 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 right, 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 left.
Thank you very much. Appreciate, and that our all-female group, very great to see them with us. I want to mention that Ms. Mackey is not just here in spirit, but she's here with us on the phone. So, she is part of the meeting tonight. If you hear, hear her come from the phone into the mic, did you want to make your comment, your point of privilege?
Okay. Good evening. Oh, that's so sad, my God. Good evening. That's so much better. I just had a brief announcement. A while back, we talked about expanding the good things that the students in our district do by offering our, our information to various papers around the community. And tonight, we can finally announce that we also, with joining us with The Voice and other papers, we are, we have the panoramic paper, we'll be doing articles now for Richland School District II. So, that's a kudos for our kids, because we do all these great things, and we talk about them, and they're on the web, they're hidden in the picture somewhere, but it needs to be out there in a paper, because other districts are highlighting and showing everything that they're doing. So, I just kind of thought we needed to be in their paper also. So, we're now going to be in their paper. These are absolutely free, and they'll be able to pick up. So, if you have pictures that you'd like us to have sent to the panoramic with a story, I'll take some responsibility for some of that. You can send them to me, and I'll make sure that they get them there, or Dr., somebody on Dr. Davis's team will make sure that we get them there. But we want to make sure that we have our students highlighted in as much and as many venues as possible. So, we have these here tonight. I didn't know they were going to bring all these, but we have these here tonight. So, after the meeting, please feel free, if you've never seen the panoramic, please feel free to see what they do. But I just wanted to make that announcement, because like I said, our kids need to be highlighted. Thank you.
All right. She basically asked y'all to flood her email box, so y'all have at it. At this point, I will ask for a motion to approve our agenda. Mr. Shad.
I move that we approve the agenda for February 11th, 2020, school board meeting.
Motion's been made by Mr. Shad. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Dr. Holmes. Is there any discussion? With no discussion, we'll have the vote. We will now move on to the special recognition portion of our agenda. Dr. Davis.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, members of the board, we have Ms. Libby Ruth before us this evening to share the special recognitions for the February 11th, 2020 Board of Trustees meeting. Ms. Ruth.
Thank you, Dr. Davis. Chairman Manning and board members, we appreciate the time. You a lot to recognize state and national accomplishments of our students and employees. And to our guest, thank you for joining us in celebrating these successes. Dr. Holmes is going to help pass out some certificates, and we will get started. I'm going to begin with our school counselor. Last week was National School Counseling Week, so we're going to begin with our award-winning school counselor, Ms. Torina Gardner from Bethel Hanbury Elementary School. Ms. Footman, if you'll come forward with her as well. Ms. Gardner has been named the Elementary School Counselor of the Year by the Palmetto State School Counselor Association. The award is an esteemed recognition for the profession of school counseling. The nominees are judged on the basis of their professional experiences and successful school counseling program development. For more than two decades, Ms. Gardner has worked as a school counselor at elementary, middle, and alternative schools, and was previously director of school counseling at two Richland II middle schools. She is a leader in the field who recognizes the importance of her individual role in shaping the future of counseling, of the counseling profession. She works hard to impact student achievement and serves as a voice for elementary school counselors in South Carolina in order to assure students across the state receive premier counseling services. I'm going to skip my order, change my order up a minute. We're waiting for a principal to make a mad dash stuck in traffic, so we're going to go over to Ms. Odom. So, Sarah Odom from Catawba Trail Elementary, please come forward. And I'll ask Jennifer Gillespie, your principal, to come forward as well, and our lead nurse for Richland II, Dawn McAdams. Ms. Odom has been named the South Carolina School Nurse of the Year and received her award last month at the 39th Annual School Nurse Conference. Nurse Odom is known and respected for her leadership, knowledge, family-centered approach, and willingness to serve, serve others. She recognizes a student's health plays a large part in their success in the school setting, and she advocates for all students' health. Her clinical assessment and clinical judgment skills allow her to notice, notice subtle changes in students. She then works with the parent to advocate for her, the students' healthcare needs. She stops to take time to listen to each child and works tirelessly with all students, especially those with special healthcare needs. She is a positive role model who often allows students to visit with her for an emotional timeout to regroup. Students find the health clinic to be a safe haven, and often after visiting for a short time, they are ready to return to their classroom to learn and engage positively with their peers and teachers. I think everybody can remember going to the school nurse's office just to have that little moment to rest, and if the fever didn't, wasn't there, at least we could always count on our school nurses to help us get, get encouraged to go back to class. We thank you for keeping our children safe and healthy, and congratulations, Ms. Odom. I'm very sorry. I am coordinating with the principal. He was walking in from another school. So, Josh, if you will come on up. He's, he is, he is outside. He is coming in, so we will just stand right there. We're going to talk really slowly. Josh is from Spring Valley High School, and his principal, Jeff Simone, was at another school at an event, got stuck in traffic, and there he is. Woo-hoo. That was perfect. Now, let's pay, let's go back to Mr. Drews, because he's the one that got the award. Perfect timing. He is an art teacher at Spring Valley, and he was selected as the National Secondary, Secondary Art Educator of the Year by the National Art Education Association. There is no greater testament of Mr. Drews' exemplary contributions to the field of visual arts education than being chosen for this prestigious award. Your colleagues throughout the United States and abroad applaud your leadership, commitment, and service to the profession. In the nomination letter, Mr. Drews was described as a progressive educator interested in providing his students and fellow teachers with information on the most current technology and techniques in the visual arts. He gives of himself without expecting anything in return. He cares greatly for art education in South Carolina. Mr. Drews will, will be presented the award next month during the association's national convention in Minneapolis. Congratulations. Now, I'm going to ask the rest of the school board, Mr. Drews, Mr. Simone, y'all can. As the school board is coming forwards for our, we're going to be, Michelle Taylor Brown is coming up here to introduce our national board certified. I just want to point out real quick, if you noticed, within a month, Richland II is now home to two state-level award winners and a national-level award winner. We are state nurse of the year, school counselor of the year, and a national art teacher of the year, all within about two or three months those awards came in. So, that's pretty prestigious and certainly premier.
We would like to recognize our first-time national board certified teachers, as well as our teachers who earned certification for a second time, as well as one teacher who has actually earned it for a third time. Overall, 730 teachers have earned this achievement as a Richland School District II teacher. National board certification requires teachers to demonstrate content knowledge, reflect on student work samples, video and analyze their teaching practice, and document the impact of assessment and collaboration on the student learning. Congratulations to our national board certified teachers, and I ask that you hold your applause until all have been recognized. And we will start with our brand-new national board certified teachers from Bridge Creek From Catawba Trail Elementary, Danielle Snyder. From Windsor Elementary, Matthew Estes. Also from Windsor Elementary is Jessica Lopez, but she could not be with us tonight. From Muller Road Middle, we have Mark Mooningham. And from Spring Valley High School, we have Abby Suss. And these are all of our brand-new national board certified teachers. If we could give them a round of applause. For our renewals, from Bethel Hanbury Elementary, Mary Burns. Also from Bethel Hanbury, Raquel Jones. From Catawba Trail Elementary, Latonya Schuler. From the Center for Knowledge, Blair Flora. From Forest Lake Elementary, we have Lila Todd. From Joseph Keels Elementary, Alzina McCray. From Langford Elementary, Andrea Hips. Also from Langford Elementary, Sheena Ryan. From Condor Elementary, Tanisha Bridges. From North Springs Elementary, Stephanie Kelly. Also from North Springs Elementary, Charles Reed, who's one of our child development Rice Creek Elementary, Shawna Hayes. Blackwood Middle, Margaret Enman. And from Dent Middle, Lisa Nine. From E.L. Wright Middle, Blake Bad Blair. From Kelly Mill Middle, Deborah Bennett and Brian Rogle. From Muller Road Middle, Shanice Brown. Also from Muller, Linda Whitcomb. From Blackwood High, Gina Taylor. From Ridgeview High School, Amy Jo Yanity. And from Westwood High, we have Linda Mobley, who earned national board certification, and this is her second renewal, so she's earned national board certification for three Let's give all of our teachers a round of applause. And that concludes special recognitions. And anyone who was here for that, if you want to leave now, you may do so. You're welcome to stay. We'd love for you to stay, but we'll take a moment for those who want to leave to step out. Thank you, board members, again.
So, while the teachers are exiting, I do want to remind folks at Richland II, I appreciate the board and administration remaining committed to the stipends that we give to our teachers who are nationally board certified. We believe that they make a difference, that our nationally board certified teachers are worth the, the additional funds. And I know that the state has, has been shrinking that, and that's an issue, I think, that's kind of up for debate. But I do appreciate our board and administration continuing the commitment to our nationally board certified teachers in that way. At this time, we will now do, I need an approval for our consent agenda.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, ma'am. Ms. Mackey.
I'm looking to approve the consent agenda for the February 11th, 2020, school board meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Mackey. Motion's been made by Ms. Mackey. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Shad. Is there any discussion? Motion passes seven zero. We'll now have our school focus. Dr. Davis.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, members of the board, for our school focus this evening, we have Bridge Creek Med Pro 21, and so we have Ms. Kristen Ubank and her staff here to share information with us regarding their wonderful program.
Good evening, board chair, board members, Dr. Davis, and executive staff.
Good evening.
It is an honor to have the opportunity to share information with you about our school-wide transformation into a STEAM medical magnet school. Our motto is every child, every chance, every day. At Med at Bridge Creek, we believe that every child will thrive when high-quality and rigorous instruction is combined with the application of 21st century skills. Our STEAMM integration helps bring this vision to reality. Through our school-wide transformation, our students experience authentic medical simulations in our fully functioning medical lab equipped with a hospital-grade pediatric simulator. In addition, with the support of our Engineering is Elementary curriculum, our students use the design process to explore engineering concepts across various engineering fields in our engineering lab. STEAMM is integrated into the curriculum through authentic project-based learning and design challenges in the maker space, as well as community partnerships. In addition, Avid has been implemented school-wide to help students develop the necessary skills and habits to be a successful student in school and beyond. Tonight, we have a video to share with you, and we hope this provides you with a glimpse into the wonderful things happening for all children at Med at Bridge Creek.
He's an IT guy. I appreciate this, because it keeps us employed.
At Bridge Creek Medical Engineering and Discovery Through Arts Magnet School, we believe in every child, every chance, every day, partnering with our community to invest in every child by providing diverse opportunities to succeed through medical, engineering, and arts immersion.
Our school is unique in that we are providing a multitude of opportunities for student interest and not making those opportunities only available after or before school. We have this great engineering program, and it helps them understand what to do, how things work, and it, it helps them prepare for the future. They learn what they like, and then they want to do more of it.
What I've learned is when you use the engineering design process to complete what you're working on. you're working on, say, somebody twisted their ankle outside, you have to build up a brace of the engineering design process to help them.
Project-based learning, it allows students to talk about what they want to do and find the product they want to create, because they are creating it on their own.
The engineering lab, it just lets my creativity grow.
My favorite thing at Med at BC is the medical room, because they teach us about bones, heart, respiratory system, so we can learn about it later in life and what to do when we need it.
We're doing a great job of building habits. We're using a lot of Avid strategies, organization, how to take notes effectively, how to communicate effectively. We also have clubs that give students the opportunity to choose areas of interest. They can either do some bigger art projects, or chorus, or recycling. We have a gardening club, we have a stock market club. So it really opens up those experiences to every child here. I think we're really living into our motto of every child, every chance, every day.
Thank you so much. Are there any questions?
Thank you, board members. Questions or comments?
I'm commenting.
Dr. Holmes.
I'd like to say, Ms. Eubanks?
Miss.
Ms. Eubanks, I appreciate, I came to your dare graduation, and I see all the kids there, they seem so happy at your school, and this is just another remarkable program. So I'm just so pleased at what I see happening there. And I know that's attributed to you. Y'all have to, excuse me, I had the flu, so I sounded a little crazy, I'm sorry. But I have to attribute that to you. I have to attribute that to you and your faculty and your staff. You have a wonderful school going over there, and I'm just very proud of you.
You're welcome.
Don't be coming here sick. Other board members, questions or comments? Thank you, it was a great presentation. It's awesome to see what our young folks are doing at a much earlier age than any of us ever did that. I think it was college before some of us did those things. So thank you so much for all y'all's hard work. Appreciate it. Yeah, thank you. Next, we have our public participation, and we have Mr. Gus Philpott signed up. If you could please come to the front.
Good evening, members of the board.
Good evening.
Dr. Davis, my name is Gus Philpott. As you make your decisions tonight, I ask that you remember the fiduciary duties of your office. You are responsible for directing a business with many millions of dollars in assets, 30,000 students, over 3,000 employees. Each decision should be made with what is best for the entire district, rather than only how you might like to help out one employee. Have courage tonight. Reverend Thigpen spoke about that. On tonight's agenda is a vote to change the second board meeting in March. The board will be asked to accommodate one employee of the district who wishes to skip a board meeting and go to California to speak at a conference. I urge you to vote no on that change. Please respect your fiduciary duty to the voters, taxpayers, students, and the community by not changing the March meeting date. The superintendent's job is to be here, in this district, performing the duties for which the district pays him so highly. There is no reason to alter the schedules of seven board members and 20 or so staff members who attend evening board meetings. When you get to item 13.1 on the agenda, you can simply not make the motion, or you can refuse to make the second motion, or you can vote no. Four no votes will do it. I believe the superintendent's trip to a California conference to speak provides no benefit or value to Richland, too. The board trustees should approve in advance any absence by the superintendent from official Richland II duties, just as administration would insist on approving in advance any planned absence from duties by an employee or teacher. Imagine if a teacher said he had a side hustle during the work week and wanted time off to handle it. Would that teacher just be told not to bother to come back? I urge you to hold the regular meeting as scheduled. If the superintendent is absent, the assistant superintendent can take his place. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Philpott. We have no one else signed up, so we will now move on to our legislative update. Dr. Davis.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, members of the board, we have Dr. Harry Miley before us this evening to share information regarding legislative update. Dr. Miley.
Thank you. Good evening. I'll be very brief. I handed y'all a little printed copy. The most important thing, the Senate and House have been pretty busy. The governor's released his budget. Frequently, that is not necessarily make a big impression on the Senate or House, but it has traditionally been submitted by the governor. But the Senate took action on S-419. That's the education reform bill that's gotten a lot of press over the last couple of years. Passed several amendments in the Senate. I've confirmed today that they were voice votes, and they were passed. So if the S-419 is passed by the Senate, these amendments would be in there. Of note, there must be 30 or 40 of them, but there were three that I thought, and if you had not seen them, I wanted to point them out to you tonight. And that's amendment number 30, which returns control of the school calendar to the local school board. It also adds five days to the length of a teacher contract. Now, in this amendment, there was no mention of funding those five days, but that could be done through budget or something else. So, but that was important, and it was passed by voice vote, so they didn't even roll call it. Amendment number 31 was also of note. It requires all kindergarten through fifth grade teachers be provided at least 30 days, 30 minutes of duty-free time during each regular school day. Lunch duty would not be eligible for that, that would be duty time. So that was important. And then the last one was amendment number 67, which increases the teacher's supply reimbursement from its current $275 to $550, which doubles that teacher's supply. So all those were positive things, I believe, that we have talked about and teachers have been talking about. I asked the person who actually was at a SCASSA meeting today, and the person that monitors the legislature for SCASSA and the school board and the school business officials, I asked her about what traction she thought the start date amendment would get in the House if it was passed by the Senate. And she actually feels that the Senate will probably pass something out this session. She wasn't very optimistic about the House adopting it, even though there's only one county and that handful of representatives that is opposed this local school control. She was not optimistic that that was going to be able to get out of the House, but she said that they were going to be working on it very hard. Be glad to answer any other questions. There's also a much more detailed explanation of all the amendments, which I'll be glad to share, or you may have gotten a copy from SCASSA or the School Boards Association.
Dr. Holmes.
I just want to make a comment. I hear about all these amendments that they've passed, and while Representative Thigpen is here, I'm going to say this publicly to you, Representative Thigpen. The only thing that bothers me is that the governor's talking about giving teachers a $3,000 raise, but then you add five days of work onto their contract. So in essence, you're not really giving them a raise, you're giving them more days to work, which would diminish the $3,000. So you're not really giving a $3,000 raise. You're diminishing it by saying, we're going to give you more money, but in addition to that, we're going to give you more work time. I had to say that because everybody's like, oh, it's five additional days, but then if you do that, then you're not getting a raise. So I just wanted to say that while you're here, Representative Thigpen, if you could carry that back, I know, I'm sure I don't know where you stand on that, but I'm just saying, five extra days does not equate to a raise. That's all.
Other board members, questions or comments? Mr. Shad.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Dr. Miley, to piggyback on what Dr. Holmes said, the five extra days that's extended on their contract, each individual district is going to be financially responsible for paying the teachers for that, is that correct?
Well, if everything passes as exists right now, but again, it still has to go back to the House, and it still has to, there's still a budget bill separate from all of this that could easily address that issue. And we're a long way from that. I don't think the House Ways and Means picks that up until the second week in March about, I believe is when the House starts deliberation on the budget. So those things could be addressed in that. I think it's just a little early, but it wasn't addressed in this amendment.
But it's still a possibility that even with the budget passing, that those five extra days may be unfunded.
Well, it's possible, yes. I would hope that's not the case, but.
Absolutely. Thank you. Other board members? Yeah, I do find answering is a, I'm sorry.
I did a question. Dr. Miley, did you mention, in relations to the amendments for S-419 and additional five days, is that attached to the uniform start date?
Yes, it's in the same amendment.
It's in the same.
Amendment number 30 gives control back to the local school boards, and it adds five days to the contract in that one amendment.
So that being the case, if that amendment is successful, we will get what most school districts in the state of South Carolina has been asking for for several years, which is the ability to start school early so that we could be done with exams before Chris winter break, which I think is something that pretty much every parent and student in our district, and I see it's shaking, is looking, would love to have. Unfortunately, that's also attached to having the five extra days.
Correct.
Correct. Right, and that was actually going to be my comment, you know, in a state that believes in local control, and we don't like the federal government giving us funds with strings attached, we've actually turned down millions of dollars in federal funds because we don't like the strings, yet we'll do that here on the local level. And as Representative Thigpen, speaking about courage, courage would be separating those out and just adding the five days, because we know how this will go. They will say, well, we tried to add the five days, and you said, or the start date, and you didn't want that because of the other side of the table. But on a positive note, we do appreciate the additional funds for teachers and the 30 minutes of free duty time. We know that's important for teachers, and we strive very much in this district to provide that time for our staff. So those are positives. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, all right. Next, we have student appeals. If I can have a motion?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir, Mr. Shad.
I move with regard to student number one, that they return to their home school with strict probation with services. Student number two, deny the appeal.
Motion's been made by Mr. Shad. Do I have a second? Bless you. Seconded by Dr. Holmes. Is there any discussion? If Mr. Shad, if you will please verify that your motion is accurate before we take the vote. Okay, motion is accurate, so please take the vote at this time. Motion passes seven zero. Mr. Shad.
Mr. Chair, with regard to student number three, I move that we deny the appeal.
Motion has been made by Mr. Shad. Do I have a second? Seconded by Dr. Caution Parker. Is there any discussion? With no discussion, we will have the vote. Motion passes six one. Mister, if I can please have a motion on 10.2, admission request into the district's adult education program.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir, Mr. Shad.
With regard to students one and two, I move that we accept their admission request into the district's adult education program.
Motion has been made by Mr. Shad. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Mackey. There's a delay on the phone. Is there any discussion? If we can please have the vote. Motion passes seven zero. Item 10.3, there's no need for any additional items. We will now move on to item 11. All business, no action requested. Dr. Davis.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, we have before you a proposal for GBAA, sex slash gender discrimination and harassment, and Ms. Williams will present that information to you and answer any questions. Ms. Williams.
Thank you, Dr. Davis. Mr. Chair and Board, you received this policy last month. The revisions proposed for policy GBAA, sex and gender discrimination and harassment, comes at the recommendation of our legal counsel. This policy does complement policy GIAA, sexual harassment of students, which you approved in December.
Board members, questions or comments? All right, thank you very much. Next on our agenda, we have item 13, or I'm sorry, I'm skipping. Item 12.1, second quarter financial statement. Dr. Davis.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, Dr. Miley will present you with the second quarter financial statement. Dr. Miley.
Thank you. In your board documents, you have our second quarter financial report. As I've said many times, as the year goes on, we get a better and better, more complete picture of the district's finances. Right now, we're, this was as of December 31st, so we're halfway through the year as of this document. On the page one, in terms of revenues, the revenues are tracking just slightly above our five-year average. Our five-year average for total revenues is 37.6%, and we're tracking at 41.3%. One of the things that is of note for our revenue picture is our local taxes. Apparently, our county treasurer and our county auditor are working efficiently, and we're collecting taxes faster than we normally have. As you can see, and for instance, our local taxes, we've collected $43 million. That's 40.4% of the total. Our five-year average is less than 30% of the total. So the tax collections at the county are running ahead of schedule. They're tracking on target to meet our budget of $107 million. I'll move on to the expenditures unless someone has a question about revenues.
Thank you.
On page two, is a snapshot of our expenditures to date. Overall, we're tracking, we've spent 43.5% of our budget to date through December 31st. That's below our five-year average. The primary reason for that is we're expecting, we think it is, just like last year, probably due to vacancies that we have, have been able to unfilled vacancies. So our expenditures for salaries and benefits are somewhat below what our five-year average is. So we're right on track, again, to be within our budget of $301 million. Unless someone has a question on our expenditure, page two, I'll move on to page three.
All right, so just go through, and then if there's questions, we'll get to it at the end.
Absolutely. Page three, these are the special revenues, primarily EIA money, funds that we get from the state. These are the ones that we primarily get throughout the year. As you'll see, our budget for the year is $26.2 million. So far, we've only received about 15.2 of that. We have spent only six of that, and we have a balance of 19.3. These funds are spent at various times throughout the year, and so they are on target in terms of their programmatic uses. Most of these funds, that's what's unique about the EIA funds, they are specific for specific uses. Our general fund dollars are up to the board's discretion on how we spend them. EIA funds are allocated for specific purposes by law. I'll be glad to answer any questions you might, nope, I'll finish then. Answer any questions, I learn quickly. Page four are our special revenues. Title one, a lot of our federal funds and grants, we have about We have about thirty four point three million dollars budgeted for our grants and total revenue for the year. As you can see, these are our least timely revenue source. Out of thirty five, thirty four million dollars, we received less than five million dollars so far, and we've spent twice that. Again, I think I mentioned this every time, that's the benefit of having a fund balance available so that we can spend funds on these programs before the budget, before that, before we receive the revenues. Finally, page five, on the board report, as you'll see, we're well within target of our budget of three hundred and ninety six thousand dollars for the board. We have a balance remaining of about seven hundred and seventy three thousand dollars, which is about a little bit less than half of the, of our budget for the rest of the year. I'll be glad to answer any questions that you have. The final page is, is our capital projects, and as you can see, our referendum projects. We have, we are more current, I think Doc, I think Will Anderson will have a more up-to-date report in our next board meeting for the twenty eighth, for the twenty fifth. But as you can see, as of December thirty first, we'd only spent about fifteen million dollars. We'd encumbered another twenty seven million dollars, but we'd only spent fifteen million dollars of the bond, of the referendum funds. With that, I'll be glad to answer any questions you may have.
All right, board members. Dr. Rocco Johnson.
Dr. Mallon, I have a few questions on page four, description number three thirty eight.
Fund three thirty eight?
Yes, I'm sorry. On page four. At-risk student learning. Can you tell me what that is and how the money has been used? Dr. Suber, thank you for coming up.
Okay, that's my page three. I couldn't figure out where it's funded.
Oh, I'm sorry, page four.
Okay, no.
Oh, it's page three, okay.
At-risk funding, okay.
Yes. Dr. Suber.
At-risk funding is used for students who, let's say, have a deficit in reading and mathematics. So we spend that money on mostly for professional development, but also for interventions within our school to pay their salaries throughout the year, as well as their benefits. We all, we're also going to use that money this year. We want to do something a little different and provide transportation for summer programs for our students.
For all of the students?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. I have a few more. Description, I'm not sure if it's for you, Dr. Suber or not, but you can stand just in case. Description number three seventy one, C S I and parental priority special. What is that? Oh, thank you, Dr. Suber.
These are priority funds identified by the state. Let's say if you have a, a certain population in your school that needs assistance, they provide funding for you. So we provide intervention. It could be a special ed population in your school.
Okay.
It could be a gap between special ed and your, your grade level students. We use those funds by the state in order to identify those students and provide intervention for them.
Okay. The next one is description number eight thirty two. And I think that's on page five.
Eight thirty two, rural recruitment initiative.
Rule recruitment initiative.
We have spent, we have a fund, we have a balance of about.
Can you guys come to the mic?
Just got one.
Can you come?
We have a budget of about a hundred and twenty three thousand dollars. We have spent nine thousand dollars so far. And that mic doesn't work, so this one does.
And I only ask you to come there because the cameras don't show on the side.
Due to our high percentage turnover, I did a report last year about the rural recruitment initiative. Because we had greater than ten percent turnover, we were awarded those funds. So those are funds that are used to do the premier one hundred that we're initiative. We also use those funds to give special education teachers a bonus as well.
Now, I know you mentioned that this was also for recruitment. Can you tell me where you guys have recruited? And what is the percentage of going to those locations that we have recruited teachers actually to come back to work in our district?
Right. We have traveled to most career fairs across the state. We'll be at Benedict on Friday. We've been at South Carolina State about four times, actually doing workshops on resume writing and preparing them for interviews. We have been to Clemson, Michelle just came back from Clemson. We are at Winthrop next week. So we crisscross the state, and we do go out of state for additional recruitment fairs. We also host recruitment fairs in the district as well, and we also provide transportation to and from different events to get students here, prospective employees here for jobs.
If you can tell me some of the states that we've traveled to and the percentage of teachers that we've recruited, like for an example, I know we spent quite a lot of time, I think last year, the year before, going to Ohio and a few other places. What is the percentage of teachers that we actually recruited from Ohio to come work in South Carolina? Because we've been in quite a few places.
Right. We have been in quite a few places, and a lot of our teachers do come from out of state. I don't have those numbers directly in front of me. So that is something that I can put in a board brief. But we do travel to the state of Ohio. We eliminated New York because we found that it wasn't something that was effective for the district. So we took that off of the list, but we do go to Georgia and North Carolina. So the neighboring states that we can get people to come into. Fortunately, we are a military base, so we get a lot of out-of-state recruits from being spouses in military.
Okay, yes. If you could get us that board doc information next time, because I would love to see, because we travel quite extensively. And I would love to see with us traveling, what's the payoff of that with teachers actually coming back to work in the district? And I hope you can hear me, because I have a lot of moaning going on inside of me, so I want to make sure you can hear me quite well. Thank you. I am. Thank you.
Board members, I'm sorry. All right, well, please get us that report. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Other board members, questions or comments? Dr. Mallon, thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
Yeah. Next on our agenda, we have a report on the high urgency priorities. Dr. Davis.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, members of the board, if you would.
I'm sorry, I have one more.
Can, is there any way you can just get with Dr. Mallon?
No, I would like to. Ask it here.
I mean, we've already moved on to the next agenda.
I understand that, but I have one more that I'd like to have addressed. So thank you for being considerate.
Dr. Mallon.
Thank you. Thank you for showing courage and allowing me to do this. Dr. Mallon, one more, I'm sorry. It says other funds, and then it has sixty eight in parentheses. Can you tell me what the other funds are about?
Uh, it's sixty eight other tiny little funding lines that are so small that we aggregate them. But we will be glad to get that information to you, but they're literally sixty eight other line items that are not very large. So we add them all together.
See that if you can say that to us.
Be glad to.
And when you say line items, can you?
Just like the other funding sources.
Right, but can you give me an example if you know? Like, what is it? If you guys can come to the mic, please, so if someone is watching, they can hear. Yeah, just an example.
There's certain donations that we receive that have some sort of restriction, they're for a specific thing. It might be a thousand dollars, but depending on how we have to track it, we may have it in a whole separate fund. Some small pots of money could be a state fund that's specifically for something, but they're smaller pots typically, and they're rolled up into that category.
Is that something that will go directly to schools, or will it go to like?
It depends.
Maybe the general fund or?
No, they're all in separate.
They're all in separate, okay.
But they're for very specific reasons and have to be tracked separately. It's truly more a manner of having to track those separately, and that's why there are so many different funds.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Dr. Rocco Johnson? That it?
I'm good.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we will now move on to item twelve dot two. Dr. Davis, report on the high urgency priorities.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, members of the board, I'm sharing with you this evening the high urgency initiatives. If you recall, in the summer, when we had an opportunity to have our board retreat, I identified some high intermediate and low urgency initiatives that we wanted to undertake during the twenty, the nineteen, twenty school year. And so I'm here to give you just kind of an overview and update on how we've progressed with many of these things. Many of them have been shared throughout the school year in various forms and formats. But I'm kind of giving you a collective overview of that information this afternoon, this evening. Just to recap, and I know that's kind of hard to see for you, some of the issues that some of the initiatives that we have listed. But I will go through those initiatives here shortly so that you can see them more in deep, in detail. The first high initiative issue that I want to share with you and give information regarding is on employee recruitment and retention. It's one of those strategies. So some things that we've done, you see them listed, such as implementing the premier one hundred, implementing APEC. We kicked off the premier one hundred initiative in November, and that is still moving forward. We just had an event this afternoon with the Call Me Misters from around the state. We had every Call Me Mister in the state of South Carolina represented, represented in Richland School District Two this afternoon, but I think for a total well over a hundred and seventy eight men, young men. APEC is an instructional assistance where they're working on their certification through Columbia College. And so we currently have fourteen TAs participating in APEC. We're continuing to plan the premier one hundred conference, and that is scheduled for Saturday, March the twenty eighth. We've also expanded to get on the bus to include two additional colleges. So we've added Columbia College and C I U. The district has hosted over one hundred misters. I just shared that today. And there are two workshops that we've also implemented. We've implemented a home buyers workshop and buying versus leasing, as well as new tax laws. And so we're providing some also ongoing professional learning opportunities for our staff outside of the classroom as well as a part of our recruitment and retention strategies and programs. Taking a look at formative assessments, what, one area is additional area of high urgency. Blackwood High School, Spring Valley, Ridgeview, Bookman, and Pontiac, Pontiac and Rice Creek have been added to our formative assessment. D twenty one Mastery Connect. So we've expanded that by six schools, and we're up to a total of twenty four schools. This includes all of our middle schools now, and all of our high schools are on board. North Springs Catawba Trail, Polo Road, Langford will be added next year, and in the twenty twenty, twenty one, twenty two school year, we'll round it off with Bethel Handberry Round Top and Lake Carolina will be added. We speak a lot and talk a lot about Avid, and so I know you're familiar with, you're familiar with the Avid program. But we've incorporated Avid strategies in our professional development series, as well as we're implementing, implementing Avid with the CRT strand. And so the CRT is also going to be a part of the focus for the summer institute and for our audience that may be watching via YouTube. CRT stands for culture relevant teaching, and culture relevant teaching strategies here in the district. And so we're very excited about the opportunity of implementing our Avid Summit Institute here in Richland Two, as opposed to traveling to other parts of the country for those opportunities. We're going to host it right here, but we're going to, we're going to have, I think, hopefully one of, I'm pretty confident we'll have one of the best summer institutes right here in our very own backyard with the hopes that at some point, Avid will consider Richland Two and Columbia as a site for having summer institute. So we're looking forward to that and having our teachers here under one roof. M T S S implementation is also a high urgency issue that we've been focusing on this year. So we're continuing to refine M T S S at the elementary and middle school levels to ensure that we use evidence-based interventions. We're developing M T S S at the high schools and providing professional learning to teachers and administrators. The M T S S is the multi-tiered systems of support, and the tier one implementation is district-wide at all levels. It includes our instructional framework. It also includes our Avid strategies as well as our restorative practices. I believe you see a link to the M T S S framework for an opportunity, and we will also share that framework with you as well. On-grade level reading and math by third grade is also a high initiative. So we're continuing to monitor the systems that are currently in place to ensure on-grade level reading by third grade. And we're utilizing formative math assessments to monitor math progress toward on-grade level math performances by third grade. And so the math assessments in K and one are district-created, but they're standard-based assessments, the same assessments we use for determining rating for K and one standard-based report cards. The math assessments for second grade to determine if our students are on-grade level will be MAP math. Having our students one hundred percent college or career ready, we implemented a consistent system for monitoring their readiness and implemented campaigns to recognize and motivate our students, and we're continuing to align our curriculum for the purpose of allowing or helping our students to gain credentials. And so we have a monitoring process in place at all five high schools. We have the ability at the district level to see a dashboard system that was created through a spreadsheet where we can see what percentage of our students are college and career, career ready at each of our five high schools. Many of our high school principals have put in an additional initiative for their students to be ninety percent, for ninety percent of the graduating class to be college and career ready. They're recognized through pens and programs and also at gradu, at graduation. So we've been tracking and progressing with that very well as we're moving toward having all of our students on college and career ready, college or career ready by the time of graduation. The universal S E B screening, and as you can see, the S E B stands for social emotional behavior screening. Right now, the screener is the Bright Bites Whole Child Rating Tool that we've already have access to through our current Bright Bite platforms. The screener is a survey to which students will self-report. We're piloting this at Bridge Creek Elementary, Summit Parkway Middle, and Westwood High School, where we evaluate the process and the outcomes in preparation for district-wide rollout in twenty twenty one. We're screening students in grades three, six, and nine. And in the event and relationships with Richland County delegation, some of the things that we've done to strengthen our relationship with the delegation, as well as being more involved in the political legislative process, we've submitted feedback for House Bill four six seventy, as well as the Senate Bill four one nine and the Senate Bill S, I mean, Senate Bill five fifty six. And if you know, the Senate Bill four one nine has gotten a lot of the attention because of the education reform. I'm, I'm happy to say that our board has been very active in at least sharing their concerns regarding that, whether it's here through our board meetings or individually with board, with legislators at different events and functions. In addition to that, S five fifty six is also the bill that talks about taking private, public fund money and using it for private school scholarships and charter school scholarships. And so we have shared our concerns and thoughts about that, whether it's via a letter or through direct communications. We've had members of our board, Mr. Manning spoke at the Richland County delegation meeting, which they only hold that meeting once, uh, once a year. It's usually in December, but it gives us an opportunity to kind of give a political platform or legislative platform to the delegation. Our platform was pretty much focused on S four one nine at the time, as well as the redesign of pastries and policies. And I thanked our board for participating in the pastries and policies that was held here this year. This year, not just, I think it's just a month or so ago, they take the time out to come and sit down and share some of the things that we're doing on the legislative side and, and on the governance side of the school district, along with the members of our, members of our legislative delegation that was here. So as you can see, these are the high urgency initiatives that we have undertaken, and I've shared briefly with you what we've done in each of these nine areas, as it relates to employment and retention, formative assessments, Avid implementation, M T S S, on-grade level reading and math, one hundred percent college or career ready, universal screenings, alternate streams of income. That's an area that we're continuously working at and looking at opportunities to, to take, opportunities to put in place. We currently are in the process of. We currently are in the process of developing an MOU at a local university for opportunity for an opportunity that will benefit both them and Richland School District Two and in continuing the event and relationship building with our Richland County delegation.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Davis. Board members, questions or comments? Let me start with Mr. Shad and work my way down.
Thank you, Ms. Chair. Thank you, Dr. Davis, for this report on the high urgency initiatives and as you stated, the most recent information, of course, is the Call Me Mister event that we hosted. If you could just share with the public how many other districts are being this ambitious with recruiting minority male teachers?
At this time, I I really believe, Mr. Shad, Richland School District Two is definitely leading the way in our efforts to recruit men of color to our classrooms. As you know, only about seven percent of the teachers in the country are teachers of color. That number is about two percent when it comes to men of color. In Richland Two, the percentage is about six percent, but we still have opportunities. There's opportunities still exist where we have students who may reticulate through our school system who never have a man or a male of color as a teacher. And the evidence is clear how that is very impactful, students, particularly students who grow up in impoverished socioeconomic backgrounds. And so we were the only school district that was a part of the men, the Call Me Mister Hill Day, and we had about, like I said, one hundred and seventy-eight males here. That represents pretty much all of the Call Me Mister's in the state of South Carolina here today. And as you know, that's been part of one of our initiatives is is increasing that population and our teaching ranks in the next three to four years.
Okay, thank you. with the intermediate urgency and the low urgency, are you prepared to give us a report sometime in this school year?
Yes, sir. Those will be following as well. And some of the intermediate urgencies will be moving, I've already been slated to move to high urgency for next year. Many of them we have already accomplished or have a process, have things in place for now, are in progress in achieving those levels of urgency. But for one example, one of the intermediate urgencies that we have in the district is to make sure that all of our students are prepared for Algebra II by eleventh grade. And so that means that we have to start preparing. If you if you can track that, you will see why we now have a high urgency of ensuring that all kids or students are prepared to be on grade level in mathematics by third grade. The goal is to get them caught up in math and reading by third grade so that by the time they get to high school and get to eleventh grade, they are ready for Algebra II as well as their English classes, which gives them a better opportunity to be prepared, to be successful as relates to college preparation. It's not for the SAT or for the ACT, but it's to allow them to have the opportunity to take those high rigorous courses that they need to be successful. The research shows that the best predictive student success in college is coursework, not a standardized test score, but the actual coursework. So we want to try to put our students in a position to take as many high rigorous math and English classes as possible. And so eleventh grade preparation for at least Algebra II by eleventh grade is part of that immediate intermediate urgency that will probably be shifting.
Thank you. And the, of course, you have to prioritize these matters, but I'm particularly interested in seeing and eager to hear about the plans for our diversity and multicultural inclusion conference, which I know is on your radar, but I look forward to hearing about that and the steps we're going to take to move forward. Lastly, which is the engagement with our Richland County delegation, you did mention that Mr. Manning, our board chair, spoke to them at the December meeting. And so I'm interested to hear, and I'm sure the public is as well, to hear, I guess, the flavor of what those comments were to the delegation.
I can give a brief update. I mean, it was largely in line with the South Carolina School Boards Association request. So we had just come off of the South Carolina School Boards Association meeting and I stuck to the agenda with that, knowing that that was support, what the board supported. So those were the initiatives. Some of the the big ones were certainly whole funding for the the district. Universal start date was one that that I brought up as a high priority. We talked about ensuring that with the bills that there was funding that went along with all of the requests. So I stuck in line with the the board and which sticks in line with the South Carolina School Boards Association agendas.
So not to put you on the spot, but to put you on the spot, did you feel like it was well received by you, by the delegation, maybe not unanimous?
It was all well received because Richland One was there, I was there, and we and our agendas were aligned. So the only thing that kind of brought up a eyebrow was the universal start date and I got some pushback from a couple representatives. One of the one of the representatives that was there brought up that there's a study that shows that for every day they move the school start date back, that there's millions of dollars lost in revenue to tourism. And I think the comment was y'all were always asking for more money, so you would want to support anything that helps us make more money to provide that to you. The other comment was, the question was, do we have air conditioning on all of the buses, to which I responded, no, and they said their constituents didn't want to move the start date because it was too hot, to which I said, we live in South Carolina, I don't know how. I mean, it's, I think we all grew up on it on school buses with no air conditioning, but but other than that, it was very well received. You know, I also brought up when I started my presentation that over ninety percent of our budget is in salaries. And so while the money certainly does come to us, it actually goes right back out into the local economy as we hire folks that work in the state, we pay their salaries and that goes right back into the local economy. So it's really a, I did bring that up and that we were one of the largest employers in the state. But Richland One and Richland Two were both very much aligned, so I think it was a more impactful presentation because we were very aligned in in our initiatives. Yes. Was that a good answer?
And just quickly, Mr. Shad, the DMI conference has been tentatively scheduled for September the ninth and we have already began to line up a couple of national speakers as well as, well, I think they're all national speakers at this point. And there will be a one-day conference here at R two I two. We're looking to kind of be be that that location for one of those, one of those types of conferences here in our in our school district.
Ms. Chair, I'm sorry, since you respect Dr. Davis. As far as we know, is anybody else in the in this state doing this, as far as you know?
Outside of the University of South Carolina, I think Jennifer Clyburn Reed's conference is was one of the ones that draws a lot of attention as well, but from a school district, no.
Thank you.
Okay. Dr. Elkes Johnson.
Yes, a couple of questions. The first one, Mr. Manning, you mentioned that you did a presentation?
Yes.
Is that something that you can share with us because we weren't aware, or at least I'll speak for myself, I wasn't aware that you were doing a presentation. I'd love to know what you presented on to make sure that I am in line with what you presented on behalf of the board.
So it wasn't a formal presentation. It was a last-minute thing that we were asked to come speak to the Richland County delegation. It was at Midlands Tech. They only meet once a year and it was, they traditionally have not had the school systems come and talk, so it was a last-minute invite. So there really wasn't a ton of time to do it. I know what the board supports and I stayed in line with what the board as a whole supports. Nothing individually. As I presented to Mr. Shad, we had staff there, but they had to leave. Frankly, the meeting took so long that even most of the delegation left by the time that it was time for us to present. But Mr., the board chair for Richland One was there, Mr. Devine, I mean, I'm sure if you want to have a third party, he'd be happy to represent what was said there because they, Richland One actually presents a formal guy. They actually print a document and present it. But again, I I mean, I stuck in line with what the School Boards Association says and in line with what I know that our school board supports. And it was primarily around the things that I just said, finances, you know, teacher recruitment. The only other thing that was a big item was dual enrollment, which we all support as a board and colleges and universities. Midlands Tech certainly talked about it, Richland One talked about it, we talked about it, I talked about our partnership with the Chamber and Midlands Tech for our students that take that are in apprenticeships and apprenticeships is certainly a big topic. So it was very mainstream, very much items that all of us have talked about that I know that we all support and 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 stuck by my principles as the board chair to support the whole board and not any individual mission.
Thank you. And then, Dr. Davis, just a question for you. I know that everything was an urgency that's on this list, but I just wanted to ask you about a few. One is, it says one hundred percent at-home Wi-Fi. Is, why is that a low urgency? And I guess I'm asking that because if teachers assign activities that requires Wi-Fi, wouldn't that be like a top?
Well, because that's a good question, Dr. Elkes Johnson. One reason being because we do have some systems in place for students who need Wi-Fi services. We're able to help provide and connect them to mobile hotspots that we will provide those students if they're requesting. Two, when we did a study of our our school district as it relates to other parts of the county, several of our places have Wi-Fi connectivity ability. And so where they may not have Wi-Fi in their homes, they're not that far away from public Wi-Fi hotspots. But we are looking at increasing Wi-Fi connectivity in those areas, but it's not at this point a high priority in relation with the with the other priorities. But it is something that we're aware of, in particular where you see the most or the biggest challenge is out in certain parts of the Blackwood community where there is no connectivity or limited connectivity. And so those are some of the areas that we may be focusing on.
Okay, just a few more. And also credit recovery. We know that students need this to pass on to the next grade sometimes, so why isn't that a high priority, credit recovery?
Well, it's just as a decision of administration, I guess you can make an argument for anything being a high priority based on your your viewpoint or advantage, individual vantage point. We have a process in place for credit recovery. One of the things that we've already done this year is make sure that credit recovery is uniform throughout the district. So just because it's a low priority doesn't mean we didn't address it. We are addressing several of those priorities. It's just something, the high priorities ones, those ones are going to take more time and needed more attention and so that's why they were more of a high priority. So systemically, making sure that all third graders are reading, reading and doing math on on third grade will take a little bit more work than making sure that our credit recovery program is uniformed. But we have addressed, we are addressing credit recovery.
My final question is the military partnership. I know how we talk about Fort Jackson being a friend of Richland Two, so why did we put that under low urgency?
Again, it's the same answer, Dr. Elkes Johnson. You could make an argument if from your perspective, but since we already had a strong relationship with Fort Jackson, we didn't make sense to put it as a high urgency issue, but it's an issue that we need to be aware of. So we've done some things also, again, this is an example of something that was easily addressed by becoming a Purple Star District, which strengthens that. Another thing that we did was create a military liaison position that we did not have in the summer. And so those are ways that we had already kind of checked the box for that low urgency issue and so that's why we didn't make it a high urgency one.
And that's what I was wondering because I know we do a lot, so probably it shouldn't have even been on here because of the relationship that we have. Just a thought.
All right. Dr. Caution Parker, you have anything about homes? All right, Ms. Agostini.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Could we go back to slide number one? I have, first of all, a question about the implementing Premier One Hundred. At this point, and I think you just had mentioned it, Dr. Davis, but how many men of color do we have currently in our district?
I don't know the total number. I think Ms. Williams may have an idea what is roughly, but it's about six percent of our teaching force would would fall in the category of a man of color. Six percent. As I stated, the national average is about two percent. So we're a little ahead of the national average as it relates to having men of color in our school district, in the classroom.
But our goal is to get one hundred teachers.
Our goal is to attract one hundred men of color over the next three years, yes.
So for total, or in addition, in addition to, okay. So and so have we set guidelines or goals or benchmarks of twenty-five per year or how are we going to measure our success annually?
Well, I didn't say goals or guidelines because the goal of guideline is to recruit one hundred men of color over the next three years. So if you want to make it an arbitrary guideline, a goal of twenty-five per year or thirty per year, you can do that. As difficult as this challenge may be, this is an aspiration for us to do something. And so I didn't want to make it something that was to the point of measurable that if I did not get one hundred, I think we've had this discussion in the summertime when you brought this question up, that then if I don't, we do not get a hundred, then you fail to meet that goal. Any addition that we have will be will be something that will be positive and something that I would be proud of for our school district. So if we only added fifty, we would still be fifty more than we have now. And again, it still puts us in a position to be not only a state leader in the men of color in the in the state, but also nationally, we will be still be well above the national average.
And I appreciate your answer, but as we sit here and talk about benchmarking our students and holding these kids and the teachers accountable, I think also we need to have some type of measurable goal in terms of where we're going to go. And just from my previous business experiences, it's nice to have an annual step-by-step. So if we have only ten this year, what are we going to do differently to get more? But that's just my opinion.
At the end of the year, we'll reevaluate what we did not do and what we did do. We don't control the number of men of color going into education. It is a very small number. As I stated, we had only one hundred and seventy-eight men in the entire state at this time. So it would be very difficult for us to do that, but it's something that we are mindful of and something that we're working hard on. Every benchmark is, most benchmarks and can be used as aspirational things. There aren't necessarily goals to ding or decide whether or not you were successful or you failed, but more as aspirational things to improve your organization as you move forward. As we sit at the top of this organizational chain as boards and superintendents, our goal is to look up and out and how can we change, not necessarily down and to manage whether or not those small things are being accomplished. But the goal is clear and I think any member of our school district, whether they're a principal or a teacher, understands that we're trying to recruit one hundred men of color over the next three years. It's very clear that that is a goal and we're working very hard toward it.
Mr., thank you. No, I still have a couple of more questions. On the stay survey, what is that? Is that to see? And I missed it because I couldn't pull up, but what were your comments about the stay survey?
I didn't give a specific comment about the stay survey, but the stay survey is to find out why individuals are staying with us at the end of the year. And so as we're trying to recruit and retain, we want to have a better understanding of why those teachers that have decided to stay with us are staying with the hopes to replicate those practices to increase that, increase more retention on behalf of the district.
All right, thank you. A couple more questions and this this goes in line with what I was just talking about for the Premier One Hundred. How do we, how are we going to measure the success of Avid? We've put a lot of resources into that in terms of money and teachers. How will that be measured?
It would be measured in the performance of our students and their ability and their experience in the classroom. It's not measured by an arbitrary set cut score and I won't implement an arbitrary set cut score to determine how the educational experience of our students is going. Avid is a framework. That's like asking us, how do we measure the effectiveness of the state standards? Or how do we measure the effectiveness of a benchmark? It's a feedback tool. It's a tool that allow us to implement the curriculum, the instruction, the environmental experiences, strategies for teaching students. And so we see students being more engaged. We can say that Avid may be a contributor to that, but it gives us a common language and a common framework to do the work that we need to do in the school district so that students, as I expressed earlier, when we implemented Avid, what do we wanted to do was create a consistent path of expectations and strategy for students from K through twelve, so that as students are transitioning from elementary to middle to high or from elementary to elementary, that the strategies that the teachers are using in the classrooms are the same types of strategies. The greatest impact on students The greatest impact on student achievements that research has shared with us is the effectiveness of the classroom material, the classroom teacher. Avid is a framework for us to deliver the content to our students. It's not something that can be necessarily measured, but it's something that can be seen to be effective based on the engagement of our students, the number of teachers who understand the CRT strand, the strategies that are be using. Is it a framework that is consistently implemented across the district to help our students have a better educational experience in Richland, too?
And Dr. not to interrupt, but just to back up that it's my understanding by using a framework like Avid, we are using proven strategies. So by using a national framework, that we're not just us coming up with our own strategies, but nationally proven effective strategies that we can implement across the district. Is that correct?
That's correct. Avid's focus lines well with our vision and our mission. Avid wants to close the achievement gap while preparing students to be college and career ready, which is a great fit for us. But if we wanted to take a comparison and look at how students who have participated in Avid have shown that over time, students who have participated in Avid have outperformed non, the students who have not participated in Avid, the graduation rates are higher, their GPAs are higher, their test scores can be higher if you want to subscribe to something as arbitrary as a set test score. But it is clearly a better preparation tool to ensure that students are college or career ready, as well as has been proven to close the achievement gap. Our job in a system this big is to implement it system wide. So we have 40 schools and 28,000 plus students. So it will take some time for it to 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 track on. One of the things I would like to dispel, though, is this notion about measures and goals. One of the things that I am calming more and more to realize is that school systems have bought into this notion that we have to be, meet some set score when it comes to production. We are so data driven or data informed now, what we need to be is mission driven and mission informed. We need to focus on the mission of what our school district is about. And our mission is preparing our students to lead, to be global citizens of tomorrow, to lead and excel in their chosen pathways. That's the mission of our district. That's what we need to be driven and focused on is how are we preparing our students to achieve that? Avid helps us achieve that, and it aligns perfectly with our mission statement.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Also curious about under the high urgency, are we still, do we still consider it a matter of high urgency for affordable housing and the physician, nurse practitioner on staff?
We are reevaluating whether or not that's something that we can consider a high urgency affordable housing, but we are making opportunities, as I stated earlier, we have shared with teachers on ways to become homeowners. So to help them as well as fiscal management workshops to help them be in better positions to own a home.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right, thank you, Ms. Agostini. Any other questions or comments from the board? All right. Thanks, Mr. Mala. All right, next on our agenda, we have item 13 dot one, new business action requested, approval of the board meeting date changes. Can I get a, I mean, the information is in front of us. If I could please get a motion. Yes, sir, Mr. Shad.
A move that we change for the March 24, 2020 scheduled board meeting, that that be moved to March 31, 2020, as well as the scheduled June 23, 2020 board meeting, that that be moved to June 30, 2020.
Motion's been made by Mr. Shad. Do I have a second? Seconded by Ms. Mackey. At this time, we'll have discussion. Ms. Agostini.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have, I have several concerns regarding this. And first of all, and most importantly, setting the precedence, how frequently will the board be asked to change meetings because of conflict with the superintendent? In regard to this and also for any other state or association meeting, while I'm incredibly proud that we have, we'll have people there to support Dr. Garner, who received the Assistant Principal of the Year Award, the national, it's national, correct? But anyways, and she'll be receiving an award. Where do we, as the board, draw the line in terms of changing a meeting? I'm hoping that we can get enough people there to support her and congratulate her, but at the same time, as a board member, I don't think that we should be deciding when we call a meeting and when we don't call a meeting. And to go back, I have questions in regard to the trip that Dr. Davis and the speaking engagement that he's going to go to, where we're asking to change the March meeting. And my first question is, who's paying for the trip?
We are a member of the League of Innovative Schools. We've been a member of the League of Innovative Schools under my predecessor, Dr. David Hamm, since 2014. As members of the League of Innovative Schools, superintendents from across the country come together to provide somewhat of a think tank on a national level around this notion of innovation. I won't give you a long answer because it's similar to the questions that I know have been posed in an email by one of our concerned citizens, and it sounds like a duplication of the same email that he sent to, to, to the board members, questioning whether or not the superintendent will be paying for this or the district will be paying for it. In a simple email or direct phone call to the superintendent, that question would have been, would have been easily been answered, and that is the League of Innovative Schools pays or reimburses school districts as part of the membership to the league. It is not a paid engage, speaking engagement of the superintendent. Anytime the superintendent has been paid for a speaking engagement, he has used the 20 vacation days that are afforded in his contract. I have not used 20 vacation days since being superintendent because I spend the vast majority of my time in the school district. I think my track record speaks for itself that I have visited probably more classrooms and more schools in three years than any of my predecessors. And that's not a knock on them. That's just who I am. I'm in classrooms, I'm in schools, I'm at programs on Saturdays and Sundays for presentations and church services and fashion shows for students, well beyond the 245 days that's listed on the contract. The superintendent is a 365 day job, 24 hours a day. My phone is never turned off, and I'm always readily available to anyone who needs to reach me. My sole purpose was to try to continue to advance the school district because as I stated earlier, any person is tagged with the title of CEO of an organization that is, that manages physically what we manage and lead what we lead. That's the whole notion of being premier. I stated when I first took this job that when they look around and say, who's doing it the best, that Richland School District 2 should be on that list. Well, one of the things that Richland School District 2 is doing the best is in the, in the work of equity. We are leading in the work of equity, and Compton Unified asked if I would come to present with them on what we are doing and around equity in Richland, too, and how could they learn from what we're doing? I just, I'm a little embarrassed that I have to defend myself around the work that I do to advance the school district and bring positive light to what we do and highlight because really, it's the work of the board and it's the work of our students. But it's paid for by, we are reimbursed by the League of Innovative Schools. They reimburse the travel, they reimburse the hotel, and I use a professional day because I'm doing professional work. If I am being compensated for anything, I take a vacation day and, and have always done so since being superintendent.
Well, thank you for those answers. And yes, we did have a member of our, from our community send those questions to us, but I had those questions prior to the receipt of his email. There are three reasons why I'm not going to support this. First of all, I have a previous commitment to my family. All of my family does live out of state. I base my personal schedule around our board meetings, and so I will honor the board meetings. Number two, as I mentioned before, setting precedence, how frequently will this happen that we'll be asked to change board meetings, not only for myself, but for the other board members sitting up here and for all of you sitting out there? And then finally, we have, I think about our students and the students that we have up for expulsion appeals. Today, we had three students, all who had infractions or incidents that happened at the beginning of January. It takes us approximately a month to get it processed, just based upon the hearings and the time that they're given to do that. So I do not want to eliminate them by, or delay them by a week so that we switch the meeting date. Thank you.
Just as a point of clarification, processes, protocol, measures have been taken so that there is no lag time in the number, the lag time in students' hearings or expulsion appeals being dealt with by the board. We made provisions to ensure that there is no lag time based on how we've scheduled the meetings. We have a meeting scheduled, I believe, one week after that meeting. There are, I believe, five Tuesdays in that month. And so that the moving of the dates has to do with, with spring break and, but we made accommodations to make sure that we have adequate time to address student appeals.
Mr. Chair, perhaps I'm not clear. Our meeting is supposed to be changed from March 24 to March 31. We could, as a board, hear the appeal on the 24th, and the family would be able to, at that point, make direction in terms of what they will do with their students, whether they're returning to their home school, going to Blythewood Academy, or making another educational choice for the student. They are deferred by a week with a delay of a meeting. Thank you.
So Ms. Agostini, are you asking to make an amendment to the original motion that we hear student appeals?
No, I'm not. I'm just, I'm just making my point. Thank you.
All right. Ms. Mackey?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you for, am I off mute? Thank you for acknowledging my comments. I wanted to, to say that since I've been on the board, I appreciate the work that Dr. Davis does for the district. He's the CEO of our district, and I would certainly not want to have a meeting conducted without his presence. He just talked tonight about some of the strides that he makes that we don't ask him to do. The fact that he is, he's under scrutiny for, for, for planning ahead baffles me a little bit. But I will say that since I've been on the board, we've had a board chair, we've had a previous board member who's a board chair, who changed their schedule, and we changed a board meeting because that board chair had a conflict, and we had a vice chair who could have, who was present at the meeting, but didn't, but they could have covered the meeting and didn't. We changed the meeting, there wasn't a problem. This is not the first, second, or third time this has ever happened. Why Dr. Davis is under scrutiny, I'm not sure, but I know that there were only three minutes that were allotted for public participation tonight. Let me share some of the things that, some of the concerns that, that raised a red flag with me with regard to the email we concerned. We don't need more liberal California-based philosophies and ideas in Richland, two schools. If that's not inclusive, if that's not exclusive, I don't know what is. We want him to have his, him be seated in the chair and have his speak on the floor in Richland, too. For the small contribution that the superintendent contributes, you know, we don't need him there. Small contribution? He's the CEO of our district. There were terms that were said with regard to who asked him to come to the, to the seminar. I want people to understand that Dr. Davis is actually recognized on a national platform. He's one of the premier leaders in the nation of, of, of this, of the nation of this country with regard to equity and issues, with regard to just being a darn good educator and CEO of the organization he represents, and his reputation precedes him. So to have him scrutinized at this time while other superintendents or other even leaders of the board or executive staff weren't scrutinized, I can't figure out why the scrutiny is for him. And they're asking, you know, what, with regard to his, you know, FPIs, what, what is, what is his money, where does his money come from? That's no one's business. If it's private income that someone put reports, that's no one else's business. So my question to you is, with regard to the, the tone of the email that we, that we received, I was taken aback and quite frankly offended with the tone, and it's also because an employee had a side hustle. Would the superintendent tell him not to bother to come back? I hardly think that a doctor of education who has, you know, myriad years of education, of experience would be relegated to a side hustle because people ask for his expertise. I wanted people to know the full tenor of the email that we received tonight, since there were only three minutes that were allotted publicly. No further comments, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you very much, other board members. And I do want to say, as chair, and I've certainly been in this role several times before, been on the board for 10 years, I have seen previous superintendents that have been engaged outside of Richland, too, in ways that were beneficial to our school district. And I've been here with three superintendents now. This is not unusual or uncommon. I think the thing that's unusual or uncommon is that Dr. Davis is a little more transparent in the things that he's doing. Some of our previous superintendents were not always as transparent in the number of activities that they did outside the district or as transparent in their involvement. He and I, while I'm in the role as chair, meet regularly on the, the ethical boundaries of his involvement in other activities and how he, how he always takes personal days for the times when he's engaged in personal activities. We have many folks in the district who do things outside of the school district that use personal days, and sometimes they use professional days depending on where those professional boundaries are with things like, what is it, used to be advanced ed, now it's cognia, many other professional activities that actually benefit our district tremendously and are, you know, sometimes related in, in different ways. So when he came to me with a request, I felt that it was reasonable, and I do know that we, as a board, have also agreed that one of our goals is for Richland, too, to be more outward facing, to be more engaged, not only the board, but the, the superintendent. And also, you know, we do have tremendous respect for our assistant superintendents, any one of which could sit in the seat and take care of us during a meeting. But I, as board chair, appreciate Dr. Davis being here as the designated leader of this district and being part of our meetings, and felt it was important to provide this opportunity to the board to vote on this as a whole. And so this will now be a board decision as to whether we move these dates or not. If there's no other discussion, you have one more? All right, Dr. Holmes, and then Ms. Shad.
I have been in education for 30 plus years, and Dr. Davis, I'm going to say this publicly, you are one of the finest superintendents that I have seen. I have seen, there are not many superintendents that attend all activities and do the things that you do. And in actuality, it is an honor for this district to want to seek him on a national level to speak because that only brings honor to your district. He's not going on a pleasure cruise to go enjoy the beach. He's going to represent the district and to say and highlight the things that we are doing positive in this district. So I'm just going to say this, Dr. Davis, thank you for all that you do. I appreciate what you do.
Mr. Manning.
Can I get Mr. Shad first and then come back? Do you?
Yes, go ahead. Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Members of this board, members of the public, what are we talking about? We're talking about changing a doggone meeting from one week to the next. One week to the next. I'll speak up. Absolutely. We are talking about allowing our superintendent, who was called, who was asked to speak on one of our initiatives, one of the high urgency that we got a lot of questions about tonight. Who knows, out of that conference and him presenting, we may end up recruiting some male members, men of color. That can be a plus for our district. Imagine our superintendent saying that I cannot go because the board decided not to move the board meeting one week later. Not cancel the meeting. And I would share with my fellow board members that when we approved the 2019, 2020 schedule, at the end of that schedule, it specifically says, these dates are subject to change. So it's already baked in that we can change it. That's what we're doing now. So I wholeheartedly approve of this. I made the motion for this. I want to address what was said prior to us coming to this meeting. I won't do that. From a scheduling standpoint, while it may be inconvenient for some to not make the March, potentially the March 31 meeting. potentially the March thirty-first meeting, and yes, we make schedules according to what we've done, life is also about adjustments. And if we can adjust our schedule for one week so that Richland School District Two will be promoted, I absolutely have no problem with that. Secondly, the June meeting, and I don't know if a lot of folks know this, but this is the SCASA conference. Superintendents attend, some of our board members attend. Dr. Elkins Johnson goes faithfully. So, and I don't want to get in your business, but more likely than not, she wasn't going to be at the June twenty-third meeting, because she's going to be at SCASA with her folks, and I have no problem with that. So this second part of my motion not only accommodates Dr. Davis so that he can support our South Carolina Elementary Principal of the Year at the dinner that night, but I'm hoping that our school board members will be there as well, so the entire state and people who also come in from out of state can see that she has that support, and not just in talk. Because again, we're only talking about moving it, not eliminating the meeting, still doing the business of the district one week later. There will be times in our schedule that we may not be able to make the meeting for personal reasons, whatever the case may be, but the business of the district still goes on, and it's okay. So every individual board member, of course, has to make their call, but it's unfortunate if this is not a unanimous vote.
Ms. Mackey?
I was going to withdraw my comment, but I do want to make an example. I went to a state, a national conference last year, and Dr. Davis was pulled into a national, a national panel discussion with regard to his knowledge base on an educational matter, just because they realized he was in the room, because he's that, that much of, of, of an advocate for education and an expert on that. I was at a, recently, out of town, and someone saw my badge that said Richland Two, and they said, Richland Two? Oh, I'm familiar with you all. Dr. Davis, is he, is that your superintendent? Is it not? And they wanted to talk about something that he had done, that some, some visit that he had made, but what I'm, so I wanted to make sure that people understand the, the global, the national implications that he has when he represents us, and with regard to a school board meeting, I would certainly want the CEO of our district to be there. Thank you, Mr. Manning.
Thank you. All right, board members, any other questions or comments? We will take the vote now. Motion passes six to one. Next on our agenda, we have the draft agenda for the February twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty meeting. Dr. Davis.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, members of the board, for the February twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty board meeting, we will go into the executive session. We'll call the order at five-thirty, and then recess into executive session, where we'll address executive session items, student appeals, student admission requests to the district's adult education program. We'll then go back and resume for public session at six-thirty, where we'll have our inspirational moment and ask for the approval of the agenda. We'll have the approval of the consent agenda, as well as public participation number one, and our legislative update at seven point one. At eight point one, we'll have our voting on executive session items, which will include our student appeals and student admission requests into the district's adult education program, and any item that is needed that was discussed in the executive session that requires a vote. We'll have the old business no action requested, which will be our capital improvement update, our second quarter discipline report, as well as report regarding our 4K program. We'll bring for, before you policy proposals, J J F, which is student activity funds, J L A, student assurance coverage, and I M B, which is teaching about controversial and sensitive issues. If you recall, that was something that was sent back to F A C for further review. We'll have, under new business action requested, a bond referendum resolution. We'll have the policy revisions for new business action requested, as well as agenda for the next, for the upcoming board meeting. We'll, we'll move into any items for, asking for approval of the agenda items, public participation number two, should we have it, board and superintendent comments, executive session number two if needed, and executive session voting items should be needed and then adjourned.
All right. Any questions or comments? We'll move on to item fifteen dot one, if I can have a motion.
Mr. Chair.
Ms., Ms. Mackey?
I move to approve the draft agenda for the February twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty school board meeting number twenty-two.
Motion's been made by Ms. Mackey. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Shad. Is there any discussion? At this time, we'll have the vote. Motion passes six to one. We have public participation number two. There's nobody signed up, so we will move on to item seventeen dot one, board and superintendent comments. I'll start at my right with Ms. Agostini.
I'll be brief, just everybody have a great evening. Thanks.
Thank you. Dr. Holmes.
You all have a great evening.
Ms. Mackey, you got moved to my left, because that's where the phone is.
Yeah, I just want to say thank you for everyone who was there tonight, even though I can't be, and I wanted to just take the time to thank the people who are in education, whether you're in a classroom, certified, non-certified, teachers aid, please know that every impact and interaction that you have with a child impacts them. I know that Ridgeview recently lost an assistant coach. He was not an F T E, he was an assistant coach, but the home-going ceremony for him was, was something that was, you know, put into the lives of the dignitaries. He had touched so many people, and impacted so many people, never bragged, never bragged or told anyone what he did, or bragged about his accomplishments, but he just did it, and his impact was felt far and wide for Jason Anderson. So my point is, you know, aside, aside from telling the Ridgeview family and communities, you know, that I feel for them, but I want to thank the people in the room, because please know that whatever contribution you make to educating a child, it has a ripple effect, and I just appreciate you and thank you, that's a good one. Thanks, Mr. Manning.
Thank you, Ms. Mackey. Dr. Consholm Parker?
I'd just like to thank everyone for this meeting this evening, and I, and I just want to make a point here. This really has affected me, it really is bothering me, after almost forty years in this district, a superintendent is being questioned or challenged about going out of state, going to a conference, a national conference, and representing our district. I find it reprehensible, and I really am questioning the real, the real reason behind all of this. Thank you.
Dr. Elkins Johnson?
I'd like to say congratulations to all our national board certified teachers. Kudos, keep doing what you do. Thank you.
Ms. Shad?
Happy Black History Month. Happy Black History Month. Thank you.
And Dr. Davis?
In celebration of American Heart Month, we are cutting the ribbing this weekend on a new pathway to, to fitness at R two I two. Come walk with the superintendent at ten a.m. Saturday, February the fifteenth. Along the path of walkers, can scan Q R codes and watch videos demonstrating exercises. After the walk on Saturdays, the Dexo, the district's food service partner, will hold a healthy cooking demonstration in the R two I two cafe. The pathway is the first of several planned pathways to fitness. Please keep Ridgeview and Spring Valley High School in your thoughts and prayers as they deal with the loss of two beloved coaches, Coach Jason Anderson, an assistant football coach at Ridgeview High School, and Coach Theresa Leggett, an assistant girls' basketball coach at Spring Valley High School, two well-loved and respected members of our, our district. Excuse me. President's Day, Richland Two, schools and district offices will be closed on Monday, February the seventeenth, and the servants of President's Day. Enjoy your long weekend, and please join us for the Come Walk with the Superintendent on that Saturday. I'll get you out early. I've, I know I recruited my daughters, they'll be there with me. Also, if you didn't know, this is, this is South Carolina School Bus Drivers Appreciation Week, so we thank our bus drivers today and every day for the important role that they play in the education of our students, school bus drivers, whether operating a bus on a route, taking a team to a game, or driving a school group to an activity are a critical component of the education process. This is a reminder that the 4K Child Development Enrollment is open and will remain open through March twenty-sixth. Richland Two offers free 4K child development to students who qualify based on developmental readiness, free and, free or reduced price meal status, or other at-risk factors. More information is available on our homepage of our website. And Richland Two is joining the Nash, the nation in celebrating Black History Month. A host of activities are scheduled throughout February to learn about and recognize the achievements of African-Americans. We will celebrate Richland Two's two thousand twenty Black History Month honorees at a special program here at R two I two on February the twenty-fourth. Visit the, visit the diversity and multicultural inclusion section of our website for more information.
Thank you much, Dr., thank you very much, Dr. Davis. I want to, again, I want to thank this board for the opportunity to be chair of this board, and I, I do try to provide opportunity and hope that we all remember that we have different opinions, diverse thoughts on many things, and so I appreciate the opportunity to have sometimes difficult but open and honest discussions so that we can understand the different perspectives and views. Sometimes we all end up on one end or the other of that, which I know I have many times ended up on what I felt was the wrong end, but it is an important part of governance that we don't always agree, and that we can have these discussions and different opinions, and then come out as a body in a direction. So I appreciate the opportunity to have some of the discussions that we had tonight, and lively discussions. I certainly appreciate Representative Thigpen, he stayed well beyond the time that he had to in order to be part of our board meeting. I appreciate his time with us this evening, and thank all of the staff for the work that you do. I know I got a, a great compliment with our finance staff today on the timeliness and the way that they treated folks for requests in a way that was different than, I think, fifteen other districts is the way it was said, so thank you all for your work that you do every day. Dr. Miley, you're a small part of that. Yeah, but anyways, thank you all very much. I would like a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Chair, I move that we adjourn the February eleventh, two thousand twenty meeting immediately.
Bam. Motion made by Mr. Shad, seconded by Dr. Holmes. Please let the record reflect that Ms. Mackey has left the meeting. So all in favor, please raise your right hands high, and motion passes six zero. Thank you very much.